The order to the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission for January 23rd, 2023. Good to see each and every one of you here this morning. Ask that you please stand for our prayer and pledge led by Lee Vogel. Lee?
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this time that we can come together, and we thank you for the many blessings that you pour out on us each and every day, and we ask that we would take recognition of those and use those to the full benefit and glory to you. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to be able to come here today to conduct the business of the county. We ask that you watch over the proceedings and that the decisions made here today will be pleasing to you. Heavenly Father, we ask that you watch out and guide our community, our county, our state, and our nation as we move forward into the future. Heavenly Father, we ask that you watch over all of our emergency services and those that watch out and protect us each and every day, and our military as they serve across the world. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this time once again. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. End with our roll call and determination of quorum.
Jim Everwater.
Here.
Jeff Phillips.
Present.
Mike Kush.
Present.
Lee Vogel.
Here.
Charlotte Peet.
Here.
Trey Gooch.
Here.
David Jones.
Here.
Chip Pinion.
Marvin Whitworth.
Here.
Jim Thompson.
Here.
Pettis Reed.
Here.
We have a quorum.
We have a quorum. We'll move into item number four, election of chair and vice chair for calendar year for 2023.
Yes, sir. I'll go ahead and start this, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Consistent with our bylaws, every January during our day meeting, this meeting here, we do elect our chair and vice chair for the calendar year. This year, our nominating committee was made up of Jim Everwater, Marvin Whitworth, and Charlotte Peet. I will turn this over to Mr. Everwater for his recommendation.
Thank you, Doug. The nominating commission committee is very happy to report that after a careful consideration of the career opportunities, our current vice chair, Lee Vogel, has agreed to continue as vice chair. So therefore, the nominating committee recommends Lee Vogel. And with that being said, no further motions. We will, or no further nominations. We will move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We do have to do the chair as well.
The nominating committee also recommends Pettis Reed for chairman again.
Yep.
And we will make that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations both, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Vice Chairman.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I thought there for a moment that we were going to bypass the chair and just move on. But thank you. We look forward to another good year. I mean, I've had the opportunity to follow some good leadership in our past chairman that he's done an excellent job, and I think we'll try to go and follow his lead in what has happened here before. If you look at what we have today to look at and what we have done before, and we've also got the comprehensive plan that we'll be working on. So I think this year will be an interesting and exciting year for us in planning here in Rutherford County. We will now ask for the approval of our minutes from our vice chair for December the 12th, 2022.
Mr. Chairman, I have reviewed the minutes of the December 12th meeting and have found those to be in good order. Therefore, I make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Have a second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Minutes have been approved. Any items withdrawn or deferred?
No, sir.
We'll move right into our business. First item in seven, A, submitted for preliminary plan approval. The Jurgen property, 231001, 218 lots on 147.69 acres, zoned RM, located along Highway 99, Middle Tennessee Developers Incorporated applicant.
Yes, sir. Thank you, and good morning, everyone, again. This property is located along Highway 99, immediately adjacent to the Rockville Meadows subdivision, right to the south. Their plan is to divide this property into 218 lots, 210 of which would be for houses. The remaining eight lots would be for common area detention, those type of things. This property is proposed to be served by a step system, which is, will be owned and maintained by CUD. This is a conventionally zoned subdivision, meaning it's not a planned development, so all lots have to be at least 15,000 square feet in size. There will be a connection into the Rockville Meadows subdivision onto the north side of the property as well. Originally, we were looking at a stub street to the south, but after looking at it and talking with the design engineer, we felt that possibly one to the west might be a better option. Both properties are going to have their own challenges. It's good to have the stub, just the event that one is able to be made, but if there's going to be one made, it's probably going to be a good amount in the future before you ever see one. There are also two access points onto Highway 99, along with traffic turn lane improvements along Highway 99 accessing the subdivision. This development does drain into a volume-sensitive area to the north in the Rockville Meadows subdivision. There are several sink holes that have been identified on the subject property. We will require a 100-year flood plan analysis at the construction plan stage should this application be approved to confirm that any off-site flooding would not increase due to development of this property. Most of our comments from at least a planning and zoning standpoint have been addressed. However, I'm going to turn it over to Mike. There are a lot of engineering and drainage concerns with this property, so with that, I'll turn it over to him.
All right. Thank you, Doug. I'm usually not surprised with some properties out in the county, but this one, I think it is going to be quite a challenge. It is littered with sink holes in the back of the subdivision, and I will show you a little bit about that. There. Okay. Now, the city of Murfreesboro has a pretty good website that has, if you remember, the old relief maps on the globes and whatnot, and I'll show that to you. It kind of gives a shadowed area of the terrain. This is the property here, and you can see a lot of activities going on here. This is not so much hills. These are sinkholes. So the back part of this property is covered up with sinkholes, and I'll turn on the contours for this. You can see quite a lot of sinkhole activity on the back of this property. If you look at the property from an aerial view, you can see it has not been farmed. And typically, there's a reason for it. It's either too rocky, it's too steep, or there's other challenges like this, sinkholes. The front of the property is, got a lot of good soil, and it's flatter terrain and not as much with the karst activity. They have done a stream determination and found that there is a, this is a stream here. There's a small wetlands here in addition to the sinkholes. So sinkholes are allowed to be developed, and they are allowed to be worked on, but this is going to be quite a challenge. I thought I'd seen some of the most challenging property in the county, but this one might take the cake. It has got, and I'll show you, a lot, lot of relief in the back. I'm not saying it can't be done, but it's going to be expensive. We're going to require a geotechnical engineer onsite consistently, so they might as well open a branch office down here. This is one area here. You can see quite a deep sinkhole here. There's others littered out throughout this layout, so I would not be surprised if this design does not change from when y'all see a final plat. There's a lot of, like I said, karst activity, and like I said, it is allowed in our regulations, but we'll need direct supervision from a licensed geotechnical engineer onsite, seeing that these are closed properly. We'll need a long, lengthy review. We do have regulations that do allow it, like I said, but there are several steps, and they're up on the screen, that have to be followed to make sure that this development can be done safely and not impact the new homeowners, but also the adjacent homeowners. And what Doug mentioned downstream from this development is Rockville Meadows, and it drains to a significant sinkhole itself. This site drains to the north and then through to this area right here. This is a large sinkhole area here. So we have to have them evaluate this area as well. So whatever they're doing upstream, modifying all these sinkholes, we need to see how is it going to impact this sinkhole down here? Well, this sinkhole can take so much water, and then it builds up and spills out and goes to the north, and then there's a stormwater detention pond in this area here. And from there, it goes over land to extremely flat land. So this is going to be quite a challenge to get this to work. There's a good engineer team that's working on this, but I'm just letting you know that it, this is going to be, going to need a lot of work. A lot of work onsite, a lot of work before this gets approved. So just giving you the facts, there's no way to sugarcoat this one. Like I said, we're happy that they are making connections to Rockville Meadows. Right now, Rockville Meadows only has one entrance, and this will give them another entrance here to the south. Doug mentioned that they will have two connections. I'll go back to that. They will have two connections to Highway 99. This is one farther to the south, and one a little bit farther to the north, and I'll show you on the master plan. There's, this is the two connections point. This northerly one will line up with Thompson Lane. The southerly one is, lines up with a driveway across the street. But they will be adding turn lanes. There is a turn lane on 99 that goes into Thompson Lane. They will be adjusting this to put a left turn lane there, but also on the other entrance as well. So they will be adding turn lanes there, making some modifications on 99. But all in all, like I said, I've seen some challenging pieces of property, but this one, this one is going to be right up there because of the level of sinkhole activity. And like I said, it is allowed in our regulations, and we will force, enforce that a geotechnical engineer will be onsite during construction. I can try to answer questions there if you have any. I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Phillips?
Not exactly sure how to ask this. Our, the engineering firm, SEC, we have a lot of experience with and a lot of confidence in.
Yes, sir. They're a good engineering firm.
The developer, Middle Tennessee Developers, are they local, and do we have experience dealing with them for this type of development?
I do not know. Maybe the engineer can tell us about their, the development team.
Hi. John Minor with SEC. Yes, we have a local representative, and he's actually here today if you'd like to speak with him.
Sorry to say that again. I didn't understand it. Middle Tennessee Developers, are they local in Rutherford County?
You have a local representative in the county?
That didn't answer my question. Are they local with an office here in Middle Tennessee, in Rutherford County?
Good morning. I'm Steve Pierce with Middle Tennessee Developers, the representative here. I live, work, our office is in Williamson County. We have a development in Smyrna, Westover Development, that's majority rock right now. We have a property at Central Valley, the Vincent Property, that's going through construction drawing permitting right now. So yes, we have a presence here, and I'm the lead local representative. Thanks.
Also, this is not a PUD. It's a regular, normal residential developer. Looking at this piece of property and the challenges of this piece of property, how is the septic sanitary sewage system going to be held? And I'd just like to follow up with Mike. Does that plan for sewage give you any heartburn at all?
No, sir. Like I said, they will be doing a, not a conventional, they will be doing a step system designed by their engineers, reviewed and approved by CUD. It will be in the area closer to Highway 99 in this area where it's been farmed. So this, the front area, will have a few houses. I'll show you again on the master plan. So they'll have a few houses up along 99. Whoops. And here with these two connections, these big hatched areas will be the step systems lots. The recirculating sand filters will be here. They're showing some stormwater detention here and here, but like I said, we will, you know, they'll have to develop a full construction plan set with all these requirements met in our regulations for sinkhole drainage design. They have done it before. I'm just saying that this, this is going to be, I don't know how to say it any different. It's going to be a challenge with all these sinkholes.
And I'll just add, most of the sinkholes are to the rear of the property. Primarily, the drip-filled areas are in good conditions, but if they find any sinkholes, they will have to remove soil area per CD requirement. Same for their sand filters. They will have to have a geotechnical approve the sand filter locations as well.
We've had, we've had a number of developments where we, where we've worked in or around sinkholes. It appears that a lot of these homes are going to be built on top of sinkholes, and that causes me more than heartburn. I don't know how to work around it myself, but I've got tremendous concerns about plugging sinkholes and the functions that sinkholes are supposed to serve the county with or the property with. And then closing them and building houses on top of those, once again, causes me a lot of heartburn, and I don't exactly know how to deal with it myself, but you know, the preliminary plan is, what is it, 200, over 200 homes being built? Piece of property that has, just give me your guess, how many sinkholes does it have on it, Mike?
I would say it's in the dozens, dozens and dozens of sinkholes. I mean, so like I said, it's been done before, but I've not seen a piece of property with this many, and some of them this deep. We, you know, we've encountered sinkholes during the course of construction, and them have to be repaired. You know, didn't show up on a survey, didn't show up during, you know, excavate for utilities or the roads or something like that, a sinkhole would open up and it would need a remediation. But this, this is just, I'm not, I'm not saying it can't be done. It's just going to be extremely challenging. It's going to be extremely costly for the developer because filling these sinkholes with an onsite geotechnical engineer is going to, not going to be cheap.
Mr.? Mr. Hughes, on the area that you identified as dozens of sinkholes, is it showing how many lots is in that area? You said the area up front was pretty good, but the...
The area in the front is where the step system will be, but unfortunately, the area in the back is where most of the sinkholes are and most of the lots.
Most of the lots.
So they have avoided some sinkholes. You can see this one here on this southern edge, and some down to the south, and there's another big area here. But you know, where it gets kind of dark, these are where the sinkholes are located. That's because the contour are pressed together. There's a dramatic change in elevations. You know, there's a sinkhole, there's a sinkhole, there's a sinkhole. On and on and on, sinkholes. There's a big sinkhole.
Could you just briefly explain to me how you repair, what's the process of repairing a sinkhole?
So with, I'll say it again, with the onsite, with the geotechnical engineer, you have to excavate out the entire sinkhole, all the material, until you get to solid bedrock and a throat of the sinkhole. And what they'll do is they'll put down fabric, engineered fabric, they'll put down big boulders, and as you work up, the boulders get smaller and smaller and smaller to rocks. And then they'll wrap the fabric over the top of these, these rock backfill, and you'll put a cap on it, but the cap, you want the water to drain away from it. These sinkholes continue to form because of the intrusion of rainwater into these cracks and crevices. So if we can get the water away from these sinkholes, get them packed and filled properly, you can build right on top of it. We've done it time and time again, but like I said, I've never seen this level of sinkhole activity in one development. So this is, like I said, it can be done, it's just going to be a challenge, and it's going to be very expensive.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. I am not an engineer, and I have great respect for engineers, but I'm also a believer in Mother Nature. And I know sinkholes, we have, as Mike stated, we have built on before, but that one instance when Mother Nature trumps the engineering, who gets sued? The builder, the county? What happens then?
That might be a question for Nick, but I would, I would say the geotechnical engineer puts his name and reputation on it. He's out there saying that, hey, this is filled properly. We don't see it's going to be an issue, and we require that they have geotechnical engineering reports on each sinkhole. Any sinkhole that gets filled, that's going to have a road on it, it's going to have a house, you know, even if it's in a common area, we want a geotechnical engineering report back to us saying that this has been inspected, this is going to work. So like I said, it, you know, if something happens, Nick might help answer that.
Add, so this is a private development. The county's role in this is to ensure that it meets our regulations, and so that's what you're relying on your staff to do. If there was, like Ms. Peet alluded to, if there was some sort of 100-year flood event and there's catastrophic or other sort of damages going on out there, that's probably a dispute between the homeowners and either the developer, the engineer who designed all of this. And if the county was named, we would probably be immune from the suit on it. Your role here is to just ensure that the plat meets our regulations. Now, whether there's some defect or negligent in the design, that would be a matter for the developer and the engineer, not the county.
Chairman.
Commissioner.
Not an engineer either, but I have a lot of experience with sinkholes. Kind of a stupid question, I guess, but are these sinkholes that the water goes in or comes out? And some, I have both.
Yes.
And I think logic says, if whatever is happening now, the water's going to have to go somewhere when we close these up. And if it's a going-in-the-ground sinkhole, where it goes in that hole, it's going to run somewhere else.
Right.
If it's coming underneath and coming up, when you plug it up, it's going to try to blow it out. And if you get enough rain, as Ms. Peet was saying, it's going to happen.
Yes, sir. These steps that we have in our regulations, there's a geologic investigation, all sinkholes. It's talking about, it needs to know the nature of the underground aquifer. It needs to know the direction of flow, of surface flow estimated safe if you are discharging to a sinkhole. So there's several steps, and what, I could be wrong, but what their plan, I believe, is to plug a lot of these sinkholes and then overcompensate with large stormwater management areas. Say this area here. There's another one here. This is an area that they could put in stormwater management. So this, like I said, this plan will probably change the lot configuration a little bit, but there's going to be a lot of work that goes into this. I mean, it's, and that's why I'm saying we need a lot of background work into the geologic side of it, the, you know, geotechnical side of it. Where does the water go underground? That's part of what the work they'll have to do to prove to us that it's going to work and not impact the neighbors downstream or the new residents.
Looking at the aerial map, we're less than a half a mile from Snail Shell Cave.
Oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
You're just right at it.
Right at it.
The unrelated question to sinkholes, what's this going to do to traffic on 99? We putting 400 cars on the road in the morning?
It is, they have done a traffic study, and their traffic study says that it will, it will add to the traffic load, but from what their, their study says, that most of the problem occurs around the school site to the north at the schools. So getting in and out might not be a problem here. They're adding turn lanes, but it will impact the property to the north. Now, they, we have been talking with the city, talking with TDOT. There is a new phase of Highway 99 being worked on right now that will, I believe, is supposed to end just right past Veterans, the next phase. They've got to finish up by Old Fort Parkway, and then they'll move to this next phase. And I think Veterans is their last leg, but we've asked them to also look at the leg that goes in front of the schools. Could you extend the next phase, maybe make a sub-phase to extend that? So we're trying everything we can to get the state to help us out, to do some additional improvements in this area. But yes, traffic will certainly increase with this development. Traffic will, will certainly increase with this development.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a question that, in regards to, I'm seeing, as explained to us, detention ponds. Can you describe to me what the limits are for a detention pond in terms of the depth, length, and width? Because I've noticed one on Highway 99, just across from Subway, that is horrendous.
Yes, sir. And that's, that's something you'll probably see here. It'll be a oversized, because this area is volume sensitive. I mean, it drains to a little creek that runs through it, a little tributary, but then that tributary drains to a sinkhole. So, this area, we classify as volume sensitive. That, typically, when you, when you design a detention pond, it's the rate of runoff. What leaves the site before development is supposed to equal what leaves the site after development.
Is there anything in the state or county regs that says we can't go so deep, or we can't go so wide?
There's not anything in the regulations that state that, but typically, in a volume sensitive area, you'd rather the water spread out, and instead of go down, because if you go down, you're going to hit groundwater, and it's going to stay full, and it's not going to function like it should. So, that's something that the design team will have to, you know, work on and help.
You know, I'm just thinking, I'm just thinking, if I'm, I'm looking to buy a lot in here, and I've got an 80-foot-deep cavern right behind my house, it's not something I'd, it wouldn't be something I'd...
Yes, sir.
...want to invest in, just looking at it. But again, there is a issue with sinkholes out in this area. I can tell you just down the road there, by the subway, I've, I've shared this numerous times, and it's worth sharing one more time. I've actually seen water rise to the left of Subway when there was no rain in our area. It's coming from somewhere, and just, it will rise to the left of Subway without any rain in our area. This, this particular piece of property drops straight off, since I'm on 99 every day, it drops straight off. The challenge, I do see, the detention ponds on here sends a message to me, if I'm a buyer, 100-year, who, who would do the study on 100-year floodplain?
It would be the design engineer. It would be the design engineer, yes, sir.
Great point on the in or out on the water, so I'd agree with you.
When we look at the, these volume-sensitive areas, these challenging areas, we also require that they set minimum pad elevations of all the new houses. So, whatever drainage network this has, or if there's going to be houses right next to an existing sinkhole, those houses will be built up, the ground that they're built on will be above the spill-over elevation of that sinkhole. So, if this sinkhole starts pumping water out, we've got the houses above that. So, there's, like I said, this is going to be a challenge. It's going to be, it can be done, but it's going to be quite a challenge.
One other question, as far as the design on this subdivision, my understanding is it's supposed to be assured that there's no additional runoff from what we're experiencing today going over into Rockvale Meadows, because they've got their own challenge there today.
Yes, sir.
But we're saying, when we get through this project, amount of water running today will be all that they'll have to worry about.
Correct. From both a volumetric standpoint, since this is a volume-sensitive area, and a peak flow rate, both will be at or below current levels. And kind of to touch on some of the points that Mike had made, we are avoiding many of the sinkholes as we can and utilizing them. Basically, the sinkholes that are going to remain, as kind of Mike touched on, will be enlarged, increased in size, to account for the volume for the few that were taken off. There are over a dozen sinkholes onsite, with maybe six or so being significantly large. We try to avoid the large ones as much as we could, but yes, the intent is to overexcavate the sinkhole areas to provide enough volume to mitigate the volume that we close from the other sinkholes. And on top of that, since we are increasing the amount of runoff by creating lots with homes on them, we have to increase the storage from that standpoint as well, to provide that increase of volume, so we're not increasing the overall flow that goes towards the north. But yes, this is quite a challenge. We've done Carlton Landing and a few others to the north, that have all been pretty challenging in this area. But we will work with the county to, of course, meet all of our, all of our requirements, setting minimum pads throughout the development, and ensuring that we're not causing any downstream problems.
Being I'm the newest, being I'm the newest guy here, I've got one more question.
You're good.
I'll be quiet. Have you had any failed systems by design after the fact?
For sinkholes or for just detention?
Just a development like this, where you're dealing with water and water runoff, have you ever had a system, as far as you know of, with SEC, where you've come in and said, well, we screwed that one up?
I would say no, but there, there's always room for improvement on these situations. I'm not aware of anything that's actually unintentionally failed. There is a point in the stormwater allowance in the subdivision regs, where required to meet pre and post-development for the 50-year. We will provide a foot of freeboard on top of the 50-year, but beyond that, we're, we're able to essentially fail, but fail safely for, you know, 100, 1,000-year storm event, so May 2010 flood level. In those situations, they are essentially designed to fail safely. So, in that regard, yes, they have failed safely in that, in that regard.
We, we require that they put in a lot of redundancies.
Yeah. For, for sinkholes, there are additional, basically, safety measures, so from our assumptions, we have to assume that none of the sinkholes are draining. We have to provide additional storage capacity to make sure that, you know, if there was something clogged, or if there was already water in the system, that it has additional room for storage in order to protect the homes. Additionally, in situations where you are, the extreme storm events, where it's 100-year, 1,000-year, and the system is overwhelmed beyond design, that they fail in a way that it's not impacting the homes. So, that can be as simple as, like on the southern piece, where all of that will essentially fail eastward towards the tributary, or if it's more internally, that there's, the individual houses are set above where the spill-over elevations were, so that it could fail into the road and into a more localized drainage system.
We always try that they go above and beyond, too. We always try, you know, knowing that Rockvale Meadows has problems, when I saw this application, I was like, wow, okay. So, we always try to go above and beyond, and try to help out the neighboring subdivision if we can, so...
Yeah, and, and from our preliminary report, our detention, which is the rate of runoff, the large detention system by itself was able to meet or decrease the pre-development runoff for up to the 100-year storm event by itself. So, we will be adding some stormwater detention ponds throughout, and that doesn't account for the detention or infiltration of any of the sinkholes. Sinkholes will primarily just look at a volumetric rate. Those will also be sized for what is currently there, plus what, the volume that we are increasing by, as well as a safety factor on top of that, so that the overall volume discharge should be equal to or less. And also, I kind of want to touch on, sinkholes are kind of, for lack of a better word, scary to work with, if you don't know anything about them. In Tennessee, I, I think it's more, it's more scary to know that there's not one on your property, because that just means that nobody's found it yet, or it hasn't opened yet. It's entirely likely that, you know, many of you are driving over sinkholes, or have them on your property that you just didn't know about because they haven't opened yet. So, one of the benefits of them actually being readily visible is actually that you can address them, so that they, they are controlled, they are made and closed in a safe way, so you don't have, have a situation where, you know, 50 years down the road, it opens.
Right. We, we trade some of the unknowns for more knowns. I mean, we're not going to know everything, but we, we try to go above and beyond everything. And I was going to show you another subdivision called Bertelson, was it Bertelson Landing or something? No. Sycamore Grove, Sycamore Grove on Bertelson, sorry. This was an area with large sinkholes as well, and I'll go back in time, and I'm sorry, tell me to stop if you want me to, I've just, but this is an area that we had concerns as well. And it had large sinkholes that would fill up during storm events, and during the May 2010 flood, a map will work, there was a lot of water standing in these depressions, in these areas. So, what we, we told the designing, design team, said, hey, this is another volume-sensitive area, this is going to take a lot of work. So, what they wound up doing was overexcavating some large sinkholes. If I can get to the map. That allow the water to collect in this area, and from indications that I've heard from the neighbors, that it's helping their situation as well. So, we've asked them to over-design these, to, you know, take on the water that you're, the additional water that you're causing, but to manage this volume in, in an area that you can hold and let it soak up, evaporate, maintain. You could have multiple 100-year storms back-to-back in these storms. We've, we've made these extra-large. So, this is one area that we're keeping our eye on as well.
Can you go back to our site?
Sure.
Down the road, on the east side is Salem Landing, and I think that one would be kind of a good example.
Southern of the city?
Yeah, it's just on the north side.
So, this is Carlton here, this is Salem Landing here?
It's the one just to your north a little bit, yep.
This one?
Yep. So, on that one, we looked at, and then Huddleston, of course, did the design for it, but there, there are two rather large wet areas that kind of, kind of similar purpose to what, what Mike was alluding to, of sometimes in these rough drainage areas, it benefits the community by doing some engineered improvements, even though it might not be preferable or typical. Typical would be more, you know, going from A to B with, with some slope, getting it all to drain well. Sometime in, in these situations, you have to have, just add large volume areas that allow the water to essentially congregate and give it a chance to infiltrate into the water table safely, and take off some of the burden, you know, somewhere downstream. So, for ours, it would, it would primarily just benefit our site and going north to Rockvale Meadows, and Carlton Landing to the north of that. But we've kind of, we've studied this whole area pretty extensively. I know Mark has done a, Mark Lee, one of our engineers, has done a stream study a little to the north of this, and this whole square couple of miles, from an engineering perspective, is, is very difficult for drainage. So, our, our hope is that with all the safety factors, and all the additional measures that, that we're going to be taking for the sinkholes, that the residents of not only our community with, for, for this project, and some of the downstreams will see, see improvement.
Right. Like I said, it can be done. They're a good engineering firm, but I'm, I'm just saying that this...
It's very difficult.
It is a difficult piece of property, and he's going to lose a lot of sleep and a lot of weekends.
There's a reason that Mike and I have so much gray hair, and this is, this will be one of them.
He's, he's only 22, no?
Hey, I turn 33 next week.
Okay. Happy birthday.
Thank you.
No, they, they have, they're a good bunch, it's, but it, like I said, I can't stress this enough, don't know how to sugarcoat it, it's going to be a challenge. That's my favorite word of the day.
Commissioners, I think I may have said that this is going to be an interesting year, but what I can say, we're starting to see within Rutherford County, the lands that we have now are the lands that are not the easy properties that we once had, where they were the good fertile farmlands that we once had to build on. I know this area. I was born there, and I know these sinkholes, just like Commissioner Whitworth over here. This is the north side of the Tennessee Divide. All the water that comes off that Tennessee Divide, if you know the Versailles Knob, you know Pinnacle out there, all of everything there is going north, trying to get back to the Cumberland River. And this right here probably goes through Overall Creek, going down, trying to get to the Harpist. Out there, where we're looking right here, you'll find more water underground than you will above ground. And just as Commissioner Thompson said back there, you'll see water come out of the ground on a nice sunny day, because it's rained somewhere else. And these sinkholes will blow when you won't even know it. I've, I've been in field bush hogging, mowing, or whatever, and all of a sudden, you lose your front wheel, because the sinkhole has come there that wasn't there last year. And that's what you've got right here. So, we learned real quick on our farm, we couldn't plug anything, because it just had to be a part of the drainage system that's in there. So, I spent the summer, every time it rained, over in Rockvale Meadows, because they're one inch away from flooding homes over there. Any water that goes there, and then if you drive on down Highway 99, and all of you have known the situation we've got out there, there's a 68-acre development by the city of Murfreesboro, to build 182 homes there, right in front of those schools. That water will come from those hills there, too. So, and I think somebody mentioned, what, 400 cars? Well, that's another development with going right into that school system, too. So, challenge? I think that's an understatement, Mike, in what we've got here. But now, when he throwed up those sinkholes right there, I thought he was showing me the moonscape when I first saw it. That's pretty much it. So, this is where we are on this, and then I think we've got some individuals even talking about developing up on the hill there, Thompson Road, not houses, but storage. So, this is what we've got. Sometimes we, as we go into our comprehensive plan and look at this, we got to also look at what our infrastructure can take, and what it can't take, and where we're going, and there's a lot of things that are involved here, and we're, we're seeing this right now, and what we have. But, Commissioners, it's, what do you think?
Just a couple of quick follow-ups. There's a lot of homes on this piece of property, and it's a large piece of property, and I agree with all of that. Types of homes, I'm interested in what type of homes are going to be built there. Are they 2,000 square foot, 1,200 square foot, 3,400 square foot? square foot, vinyl side homes, masonry homes? What's the plan?
Since this is straight zoning, we chose to do fifteen thousand square foot minimum lots instead of increasing the traffic and doing smaller lots. But part of that, I'm not aware that they've selected a builder yet. So the only thing that I can really say is they will meet all the building and code requirements for their zoning classification, which isn't really an answer you're looking for.
And I'll just chime in there for...
Pretty nice sidestep there, thank you.
Yeah, there's, under the zoning regulations for conventionally-zoned property like this, R M, residential medium density, the zoning doesn't dictate house size, it doesn't dictate materials, things like that. So, I mean, that's just the reality of it. It's nothing, even if you had the information, you can't hold into it. But, you know, I understand where you're coming from.
I understand that as well, Doug. Just all the thought that's being put into this, a challenging piece of property, I'm just more than interested in what type of homes are going to be built there. Not that they have to tell that, but I was interested, so I'd ask that question. Let me also kind of follow up, and this will have a homeowners' association, is that correct?
Yes.
And the planning commission and/or Consolidated Utility has input, and homeowners' association, you have to do these things to maintain certain things, such as the ponds and...
Right. Now, the step system, of course, that'll be owned and maintained by Consolidated Utility District. Now, the things you're talking about as far as the detention ponds and things like that, yes, that would be, the maintenance would be one of their primary responsibilities for those detention areas, for the common area like where the mail kiosk is going to be and all that. That would all be part of the maintenance regime that they'd set up in their HOA.
For the county requirements, we'll have to do a long-term maintenance plan and agreement. So in the maintenance plan itself, there will be an outline of what they have to maintain for a stormwater perspective.
Once again, this is not something that I know that we're supposed to be basing decisions on, but it's something I can't get out of my mind since we don't know, and it's not being explained to us, what type of homes are going to be built there, the absolute number of homes that are going to be built there, and the experience that we're having with rental property being built there. I would be extremely interested in homeowners' association and how they would restrict buyers and those type of things. Not that we can dictate it, but I'd be extremely interested in that. This piece of property begs for investors to set up almost an apartment complex. Once again, that bothers me, and I'm not asking that question, but you're more than welcome to answer it.
That's a fair question. So, a couple of things. We've not selected a builder for the project yet, so we're working our way through this process, and then hopefully if this is approved through construction drawings. And as Mike pointed out, it's going to be an expensive project to develop. So I anticipate these homes being five, six hundred thousand dollar homes, minimum lot size of fifteen thousand square feet, so that's, and the frontage, I think the minimum on the front has to be seventy-five. So...
That's the, well, you know, minimum fifty feet at the right-of-way, the minimum lot width, which is measured at the setback line, is a minimum seventy-five.
Okay, right, right. So that's going to dictate a larger home. So there won't be any sixteen, seventeen hundred square foot homes in here, fifteen hundred square foot homes. We are not, we have no intention of working with a for-rent group. Quite frankly, it's probably not in their wheelhouse. We don't have any history of working with them. We have three, we have four current projects in Rutherford County, none of them billed for rent. So we are not going that route. One of my partners is a home builder, not here, developer here, but a home builder in another state, has excellent product that he builds and a lot of experience with that. So we plan on this being a really nice subdivision when it's all said and done, and we pay our geotechnical guys a fortune.
Thank you.
Any more questions for our engineer? I think you can be seated to get you some rest. Commissioners, where do we go from here?
Chairman Reed, one more thing. Mr. Thompson, this is a map from a study that was performed by the U S Geologic Survey back for flooding that occurred in 2001, 2002, and they identified several areas that are sinkhole watersheds in Rutherford County. This is not the entire Rutherford County, but it's a large portion of it. And you can see these gray areas are areas that drain to sinkholes in the county. Here's Lebanon Pike, here's Jefferson Pike, this is Thompson Lane right here, this is Hooper Bottoms, if you know where that's at, here's Twenty-four, Eight Forty. So, like you said, you can have a rainfall event happen in one end of this sinkhole watershed, and water start rising in another one, and they not have a drop of rain. So that's what's happening in a lot of these sinkhole watershed areas. So this is, this area for this development is actually off the map to the southwest here. And this is Salem Highway, Highway 99, that goes through to the corner of this page. But just to let you know that it's, this is not an isolated area. This happens a lot in Rutherford County. So, you know, we require that they go above and beyond and make sure they meet our regulations and do the best they can and help the neighbors.
Mr. Bowman? Chairman, would it be allowable or appropriate for us to require phasing on this project? And what I'm getting at here, the front half of that development, say, I think it's Warped Agate Drive is kind of the center road there. There are a couple of sinkholes to deal with in that area. If we could require phasing, I'm comfortable with the front part and then see how we handle those couple of sinkholes there. And that leaves us an opportunity to not approve the second phase, which is the back part, if it runs into issues or things that we're not comfortable with. I mean, I do know it's a challenge, and there are a lot of challenging items in that back section. The quick review of that would allow about a hundred and twelve lots, plus or minus. That's roughly just about the dividing line. I don't know if that's appropriate for us to do that or not, but I'm comfortable with the front half. It's just the back half, I'm just, it is going to be a challenge.
Yeah, well, let me kind of just give you my thoughts on that. And obviously, Nick can chime in as he sees fit. Of course, they're submitting the entire development as shown. Most projects like this are going to be phased regardless. You know, I would imagine that their first phases are going to be, obviously, along Highway 99, those front portions and everything. I don't know if it's appropriate to only say, well, we're only going to approve a portion of this and leave the rest of it for a later time to decide. If you've got some questions about the design of the, I guess, the more western portions of the site, an option may be, as opposed to trying to only approve part of it, maybe just to defer action on it, to let them see what changes, if any, could be made in the back portion before approving the entire plan. You do have sixty days from initial consideration to approve or deny a plat, so you do have the ability to defer action. That's based on the subdivision regulations and what state law allows. I would probably be more comfortable with that approach than what I would for just looking at and say, well, we're okay with this front part, but you really, we're not approving the back part. I don't know if you can, you know, kind of pick and choose which parts you're approving on this.
No, and that's where I was going, because I want to make sure it's a viable project for the developer. They have the rights, property rights, to be able to develop this. But I agree with what you're saying, is to go back and provide a plan to us that only shows that front phase with a future, and we only approve that front area. I just want to make sure if it's appropriate for us to recommend that or not. And I'll let others comment before a motion's made or anything to that effect.
What normally happens, if I may add, they will develop this in sections. So they'll come up with construction plans for each sub-phase or section. I have seen a plan where they are proposing, I believe, this front section in some of these lots here, they'll have the step system and stormwater management area. So it, we will see construction plans for the first phase, review it, look at it, and then you will see the final plat brought back to you for that section. So there's, you'll see this again in the final plat phase. But like I said, it's, we've done this, I mean, all over the county, you know, you've saw the map with the sinkhole watersheds. So it's, I mean, it's quite a common occurrence in the county, and we do our best to make sure that these homes are protected.
Well, and one of my thoughts was, it would allow them the opportunity to explore what they're running into before they get into that second, or that back, or that western area, and have a little bit of income generated off the front to be able to study that to the depth that we would require or would like to see to feel comfortable with that.
To kind of your point, and to an extent Mike's, I think what we can do is do construction plans for the entire development all at once and let Mike approve that as a whole. And then it can be phased up as appropriate, and they can do the lot number that they are seeking. But the construction plans for the overall development can be approved, which would cover their, all their expenses, and cover Mike for getting a, something that he feels comfortable with for the entire development.
Mr. Kush?
Thank you, Chair. So let me understand the process, Mike and Doug, and for the developer. If we approve, and, you know, Mark Lee with SCC, their hydraulics guru, starts to look at this, and he says, okay, the trouble spots along the north end of Phase Two and Phase Three, which are like lots seventy-one, and then to the left, and then the middle part of Phase Three, those sinkhole trouble spots, if they say, man, we need to leave those alone, and we lose twenty-some lots, first of all, economically, I don't know if that kills the deal for the developer. But, and if they decide to continue, they could rework the roads, the infrastructure, maybe have less of that, and leave some of that Phase Three natural then and not touch that. Would that come back to us? Any redo like that of the site plan come back to us?
A lot of it, you're right, a lot of it depends on the extent of the changes that are being made. If it's as significant as you're talking about, Commissioner Kush, I would say there's probably a good chance for it coming back. The subdivision regulations do provide guidance as far as what's considered a major deviation and what's not. So we have some ability to approve some minor modifications of staff. You know, let's just say they end up losing a couple lots, but the road network's not changing. Okay, you know, that may not be that big of an issue. Let's say that they're going to lose half their lots, and the road network completely shifts from what was originally approved. I would say that probably would come back. We ran into something like that. Now, this was a planned development, so it's not quite apples-to-apples, but Rucker Landing over there off of Rucker Road, they ran into a situation like that because of wetlands and different things, and they ended up losing a connection to a south, to an adjacent subdivision to the south. And, I mean, that pretty much kicked it out right there. So if they're losing a connection, if the road network's completely changing, I would say those would have to come back for your consideration.
Chair is looking for direction. Commissioner Sweden?
Well, don't everybody get up at once, but from my experience on the planning commission, and we mentioned this just a minute ago out loud, I think this application does meet our regulations. We have talked about at length the challenges of the sinkholes and the mystery of the water, whether it's above ground or below ground. We talked about the liability of the county, and I think we learned that although we could be dragged into any kind of a lawsuit, that we would quickly be dismissed because we have no responsibility that relies more on the geotechnical engineer and the developer There are logical steps to remediate the sinkholes. I understand that that could be a Band-Aid. I get the natural, and mother nature always wins. We do know from past history that the remediation of sinkholes have been successful and houses built on sinkholes. But bottom line is, it does meet our subdivision regulations, so I will make a motion to approve with all staff comments.
A second. Have a motion approved and a second. Other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Everwater? Jeff Phillips?
No.
Mike Kush? Dee Bogle? Charlotte P.? Ray Gooch?
I'm going to abstain from this vote.
David Jones? Marvin Whitworth? Jim Thompson?
No.
Let us read.
No.
Motion fails.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, yeah, obviously, we all know we have to have a motion one way or another to move something forward. So, I mean, I know there's more discussion to be had, I just want to throw out the option again. If the concern, and these are all valid concerns, especially with that rear portion of the property, perhaps it'd be appropriate to defer this application to allow the developer and their design engineer to work with each other, work with staff, to look at some of those more problematic areas toward the western part of the site, and then come back to make a report. Again, we have sixty days from initial consideration, so we do have a little bit of time built in here. So that might be, that might be an option moving forward.
Mr. Chairman, just a comment. Take a look at this piece of property from an aerial perspective. To me, it's overbuilt. Too many houses on this piece of property, especially considering the rural area that's around there. You've got dozens of sinkholes and dozens of houses being built on top of sinkholes, and I've approved a number, maybe all, of the prior requests to build on sinkholes, but we're talking about one or two. We're not talking about dozens of those. And I'm a planner, not just for today or next year, but what this piece of property may look like twenty, thirty, forty, or fifty years from now, all of those things concern me about the long-term maintenance of this piece of property, and that's the reason. Number one, I think it's overbuilt. There's way too many houses being proposed on this piece of property, especially looking at the rural area that it's involved in. So, long-term, I'm really concerned about overbuilding on this piece of property with the number of hazards that are on that piece of property. So I don't know what kind of plan they could come back with that would change my mind as it relates to this. So if everyone thinks that's appropriate, I'll be more than happy to reconsider. But this piece of property is, we keep saying it's challenging. To me, it's more than challenging. And I'm really concerned about not just next year, but ten years from now and twenty years from now, what this piece of property will look like and what type of problems that will be creating for the people who choose to live there. And... will be creating for the people who choose to live there. And that's my reason. And that reason is solid and not movable at this particular point. If they came back with larger lots, less density, it would make me a little bit more comfortable.
Do we have another motion?
Well, I mean, the applicant can voluntarily defer, or you have the ability to recommend just to defer action on this. The planning commission does have the ability to defer action on this for up to 60 days. Now, the applicant could come up here and say, yeah, we'll take it off. They could even grant us more time if they decide that they would like to study this more in depth, even beyond 60 days. They have that ability to the state law. But that's, I mean, we, they don't have to agree to the deferral. We can defer it for up to 60 days ourselves.
I would make a motion to defer.
Have a motion to defer and a second.
Making a motion to defer what? What are we deferring? What's the motion to defer? To defer what?
I would, I mean, as I understand, to defer taking any action on this item. Now, maybe a little bit of guidance would be, would helpful as far as, I, I think your comments are probably well received as far as they have an idea of what your concerns are and what to be looking at, to bring back something that tries to address your concerns or the other concerns that some of the commissioners may have. That's how I understood your motion, Mr. Kush. Correct me if I'm wrong.
I don't disagree with that motion, but is it a legal motion, Nick? The motion is, to deny. Can we have another motion to defer?
Well, I think the first motion was a motion to approve the application. That did not pass. And so that does not mean that it's automatically denied. And so now a proper motion to defer the item to allow for additional investigation and the staff to get with the applicant on bringing a different version of this back up to 60 days is proper. Yes, sir.
So we're basically voting on an opportunity for the applicants to relook at what they have. Do you like a voice vote on that one? Or open? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Oppose.
We have one, one opposed. So it's a motion to defer. All right, we'll move now into Item 7B, Smith for Final Plat Approval. Item 1, The Springs, Section 3, 23, 2001, 34 lots on 15.71 acres, Zone RM, located along Armstrong Valley Road. Salem Creek Partnership is the applicant. Mr. Damasi?
Yes, sir. Thank you. The preliminary plan for this development was approved by the planning commission back in June of 2016. This final plat does, or is consistent with that plan. Most of our comments have been addressed. When you look at this development, Mike's got it on the screen here, there's going to be an eventual connection into the subdivision immediately to the east, Forest Ridge, I believe. Yes. And this, this section doesn't quite make that, but it's getting it a lot closer. So it won't probably be the next section or two before that, that happens. So we're very happy to see that. That Forest Ridge just has really the one way in, one way out right now. This will give them another way in and out of the subdivision, which is, which is beneficial. So again, this, this plat does appear to be in good order and we'd recommend approval.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve. Have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? It is approved. Number 2, Jewel Woodruff Estate, 23, 2002, 5 lots on 15.27 acres, Zoned RM, located along Parsons Road. Taylor Home Builders Incorporated, applicant. Mr. Damasi?
Yes, sir. Thank you. This applicant is proposing to divide this property into five lots. These lots range anywhere from two, a little over two to about four and a half acres in size. There's a 16-inch water main and hydrant along Parsons Road currently under construction as part of a capital improvement being done by Consolidated Utility District. They are expected to become active sometime in the spring. This situation may look similar to one that we looked at back in October on Baker Road subdivision. The application for the plat was approved. Come to find out that the hydrant they were showing on the plat wasn't operational yet. So we brought it back to the planning commission and asked, what we're asking today is that any approval be made subject to no building permits being issued until that line and the hydrants within 60 days of completion, which will work with CUD on the timing of the completion of that work. And CUD will also require a note to be added to the plat to that effect. Beyond that, I mean, the plat itself is actually in pretty good shape. There wasn't a whole lot of just comments that we had. But the biggest issue we had was this water line and the hydrant issue. So with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Doug, you're saying that, Mr. Chairman, Doug, you're saying that it looks pretty good with those exceptions that you just mentioned there?
Correct. Yes. Yeah. Once that's on, once the water line and the, and the hydrant are operational, will, or at least close to being operational, we'll go ahead and release for building permits. But everything else on the plat's in good shape.
These are fairly large lots. We don't see many of those anymore. Is it permissible for someone to build on that lot and have, I don't know, horses, some kind of livestock or something on that?
Yeah. I, I mean, they're allowed to, to do that. Now, I'm not a horse trainer or anything, nor am I the son of one. So I think there's the practical situation of how much land do you really need to support livestock like that? So even an acre or two may not be enough. Just depends on what you're doing. But there'd be nothing preventing them from a zoning standpoint, at least, that they would, they would do that.
So in essence, if someone had a pony or something they wanted to put on it, it wouldn't be a big deal?
Absolutely.
We got some dogs almost that size.
I move to approve with, with staff comments.
Motion to approve. Second, Commissioner Whitworth. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? It is approved. Section C, submitted for site plan approval. Number 1, Clear Ridge Gas Station, 20, 30, 42. So reapproval, construction approximately 3,240 square feet of general retail space, gas station, and convenience mart. Approximately 2.24 acres, Zone CS, located along Highway 99. Kristina Patel is the applicant. Mr. Damasi?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This site plan was originally approved by the planning commission back in September of 2020. No construction ever began, no building permits were ever obtained. So the approval did expire. So they are asking for a reapproval of this. The plan itself, we did ask them to make a few tweaks to it, but the plan itself is in good order. We don't have any concerns with it. So with that, be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve. All with staff comments.
Motion to approve with staff comments. Have a second. Second, Commissioner Everwater. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? It is approved. Item 2, Jordan Auto Sales, 21, 3002, construction approximately 1,800 square feet for an auto sales mechanic shop on 2.04 acres, Zone CG, located at 3776 Cheval Highway. Omar Adman, applicant. Mr. Damasi?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Now, this property was rezoned to Commercial General back in August of 2020. The plan intimated to us by the applicant was that they were going to do a car lot, and that's indeed what they have submitted the site plan for. We've seen several versions of this plan over the last year, year and a half or so. As you can see, this has a 21 number. So we've been kind of going back and forth on this for a little while. We do think now that this plan is in pretty good shape to move forward. I think there's a few little tweaks that need to be made here and there, but nothing that would hold up any kind of an approval. The engineering firms come a long way in, addressing our concerns. So we're, we're comfortable moving this forward. So with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Doug, I'm sorry. I keep asking questions. I apologize. You said this was approved back in 2020?
The zoning was for the rezoning of the property, not the plan, but the zoning was.
Okay. So it's still pertinent today?
Yes. Yeah, the zoning doesn't change. And this is the first time you've considered this site plan. So, yes.
A move to approve with staff comments.
Approved. Second, Commissioner Bogle. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? It is approved. Item 3, 611 East Jefferson Pike Storage, 22, 3019, construction of 102, 1,660 square foot mini warehouse facility on 7.91 acres, Zone CS, located at 611 East Jefferson Pike. Giant garages 2, LLC is the applicant. Mr. Damasi?
Yes, sir. Thank you. This property was rezoned from Light Industrial to Commercial Services just in November of last year. The reason for the rezoning was so they could take advantage of the higher lot coverage than what was allowed in Light Industrial. So they're allowed a little higher lot coverage in Commercial Services. We have been working with the engineer on addressing our comments. Basically, our comments have been addressed to our satisfaction. They will need to do a consent to drain on the adjacent property owner, for the adjacent property owner. But beyond that, I think we're in pretty good shape with this. So we'd recommend approval, subject to staff comments.
Commissioners, any questions?
Mike, can you zoom out and show the proximity to the land? Oh, you're locked up. Well, this is on landfill road, right? The property, kind of, sort of?
It's on Jefferson, East Jefferson. It's across the street from where the landfill is.
So it's in very close proximity?
It's across. Yes, sir. It is.
Which is a perfect location for this type of project. So I would make a motion to approve.
A second.
Motion to approve. And a second, Commissioner Thompson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? It is approved. Item 4, MMI Fiber Optic Site, 22, 3020, construction of an approximate 480 square foot fiber utility building on 21.6 acres, Zoned RM, located along Manchester Pike. MMI applicant. Mr. Damasi?
Yes, sir. Thank you. As you stated, the applicant's proposing to locate a fiber optic boost station on this property, function similar to what you would think of, of a water pumping station, except this is strengthening the fiber optic signal, like a water pump would boost the water pressure. This facility will be unmanned, a lot like you'd see with a cell tower. You know, there'll be maintenance folks coming and going to check on things, but no permanent, no, no permanent personnel on the property. Most of our comments on this have been addressed. You know, there may be a few tweaks remaining, but really the, the plan in and of itself is in good order. So we'd recommend approval, subject to staff comments.
Questions, comments?
Doug, does this have some type of a tall tower with?
No, it's just a, just a building, a small building. I've got no, no tower associated with it.
Okay. All right. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Commissioner Kush. Second, Commissioner Whitworth. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? It is approved. Item 5, Watson Company Office, 23, 3002, construction of a 5,986 square foot construction cells and service buildings on CG, located at 5253 Woodbury Pike. Watson Company Incorporated is the applicant. Mr. Damasi?
Yes, sir. Thank you. This property was rezoned back in March of last year. The applicant plans to move his business from the existing location to the subject site. This property is completely within the 100-year flood plane. So all structures will have to meet the county's building elevation requirements, which would also include compensating cut. We have reviewed the plans. We sent a list of comments to the applicant's design engineer. Most of those comments have been addressed. There's a few remaining things that still need to be addressed. A few things from a fire and rescue standpoint, you know, they need to update the specifications used for the turn template, make sure a fire hydrant's provided within 400 feet of the building and things like that. But most of our, the major comments on this have been addressed. You know, before we release this for any permits, we'll make sure those, those comments have been addressed to our satisfaction. So with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, comments, motion?
Move to approve with staff comments.
Motion to approve with staff comments. Commissioner Phillips, second. Commissioner Everwater. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? It is approved. Item 6, Mona Road Truck Parking, 23, 3003, construction of a truck parking facility on 12.79 acres, Zoned Employment and Activity Center. Mona Partners One, LLC, applicant. Mr. Damasi?
Yes, sir. Thank you. This property was rezoned back in September of 2022 for the proposed use. The applicant did say during the zoning process, they only expect the lot to be about 50% full most of the time. We did express our desire to see access along the north-south portion of Bill France Road and not along Mona Road to the south, and they have accommodated that. This site is surrounded by right-of-way, either Bill France, Mona Road, or 840. So buffering, landscape buffering is not required, but they are showing security fencing and some parking area plantings as well. Most of our comments have been addressed on this. I'll turn it over to Mike to see if he had any additional comments on this. But anyway.
No, just one thing that the, Bill France is a part of state route. A number. You would ask me that. I don't remember. Yeah, for, it doesn't have it on there. So we will need T-dot approvals for the entrances on there. I think it's 452. Yeah, like you said. But one thing I did notice when preparing for the meeting, it, it's a trailer parking, not a truck parking. It, so it's kind of misnamed, but it will be for, for trailer storage, not for trucks.
Questions or comments?
Does that need to be changed, adjusted to say trailers instead of trucks?
Yes, sir. For my, my sense of calm.
That, or even just putting a note on the plan, just stating this is for trailer storage and not. I mean, that was always what was submitted to us for consideration anyway. So.
Doug, Mr. Chairman, Doug, will these be trucks, trailers coming in and out 24 hours a day, or apt to be? Or is this, if I store my truck there, I could go get it at 2 o'clock? My trailer there, I could go get it at 2 o'clock in the morning?
Well, this is for, I think, as I understood it during the zoning process, they have a contract with a, like a trucking firm of some sort, and they park basically the empty trailers there until someone comes and needs them. I don't know if there's, it's all done electronically. I don't remember them saying that there was a cutoff, that they couldn't do it past 10 o'clock or anything like that. So I think that ability exists.
Will it be, will it be lighted?
They will, I believe there was a photometric plan with that. Yeah. So there are, they are proposing security lighting out there.
So it will, could impact the neighbors if there are close neighbors there with lighting 24 hours a day?
Well, yes. But, yeah, their photometric plan, they are limited based on the county regulations. They have to meet a certain level at the property line. So we'll make sure, I'm pretty sure theirs did.
I move to approve it. So, staff's comments? Have a second, Commissioner Bogle. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? It is approved. Staff reports and other business?
Yes, sir. I do have just a couple of items. Mike, do you care if I drive? I just need the mouse. I wanted to just share briefly the year-end report that we have. We do this every year. This is something, this list here, and I'm not going to get too deep into the list. I'm really going to concentrate more on the, the charts toward the end. And this is on your iPads as well for you to look at if you want to follow along. But this is a list that I prepare and bring to Public Works every month, just kind of tracking the available lot inventory and then what plats have been recorded, which ones haven't, and how many are in the pipeline right now. As of right now, there's a total available recorded lots of a little over 1,000. And that was as of December of 2022. This next chart, really, again, I'm not going to get more, as much into it. These are plats that have not been recorded there at some point in the approval process. And you can see that's a little over 5,500 lots is what we're looking at somewhere in the approval process. And then I kind of break it down a little further, just to give you an idea of what is under, still under development tax versus what's under the schools facilities tax. That's what these next couple of charts are. Again, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on those. This is kind of what I wanted to, the meat of it, if you will. We've been tracking the total available lots. Again, these are recorded lots. Somebody could come get a building permit on these today from January 20, 2009 through December of 2022. You can kind of see it down here. It's just done by January of each year and then kind of, kind of see how the trend line's been going. Of course, '09 and '10, you'll remember, we were kind of real slow. Things were going through the recession at that time. At, the very At the very beginning of this, we started looking at it with 1,618 lots. The highest it ever got was 1,688. Then the economy started picking up, and you can see that number just consistently went down for the next six to seven years or so. The low point we hit was 548. That's when we started seeing kind of more of a fluctuation, if you will. Then we started seeing an uptick in 18, 19, down into 20, of course. With the pandemic, things really started to kind of trend down a little bit, and after, you know, recovery from the pandemic, and now with a lot of the outside factors that we can't control, such as inflation, the interest rates going up, you can see that those numbers have kind of increased again. We're seeing lots that have been recorded, but just not seeing as much building permit activity. So just to give you an idea, the development tax, of course, the schools' facilities tax was approved back in 2021. When we started actually tracking this, we knew that eventually the number of lots under the schools' facilities tax would overtake the development tax, which we did see happen about August, September of 2022. So there's, there's more lots now that are under the schools' facilities tax than under the development tax. This number, the blue line, this is going to continue to decrease, whereas this number for schools' facilities tax, it will increase, but this is also going to fluctuate. This one's going to fluctuate, the other one's just going to continue to go down until eventually those lots are all built and we don't have any more under the development tax. This is that same data, just kind of giving you an idea of the, the breakdown between how many lots are under the development tax, which is the blue, and then how many are under the schools' facilities tax, which is the red. And you can see, as a percentage, the development tax lots continue to decrease, whereas the schools' facilities tax continue to take up a larger majority of that. And again, at some point in the future, this is going to be a completely red line. You're not going to see any more of the blue. Just to give you an idea of the lots that were recorded, now, when we started tracking this data back in '05, now, this was before my time with the county, the way we classified subdivisions at that time was a little different than the way we do it today, so everything was always based on subdivisions of four lots or greater. That was considered a major subdivision. So in order to compare apples to apples, we just kind of kept the same number of lots for our comparison. And you can see, last couple of years were pretty stable, you know, went down, but then stayed pretty, pretty much the same between 2020 and 2021. We did see a pretty hefty increase this year, over 300 additional lots. I anticipate this for 2023 probably going down. We saw a lot of activity toward the end of the year. I think people were starting to see what was going on with the economy, the interest rates continuing to rise and everything. So I think a lot of developers were just trying to get the lots on the ground so they could sell them and be out from under those. So I don't anticipate next year's number, I guess this year's number, to be quite so high, but we are seeing a healthy amount of submittals to our office. I won't say it's as robust as it's been, but we are still seeing several plats and planned submittals. These last couple of charts, just give you an idea, I'm not even going to pretend to understand the rhyme and reason to the rezoning applications. It's all over the place. It has been for years. It's going to continue to be. It just depends on when people want to try to rezon their property or not. I can't even begin to figure out why it goes from 30 down to 17, back up to 30. We're already up to five or six this year. Who knows? I don't even try to pretend to understand that. Now, our BZA cases, you'll see, those have kind of, those peaked up in about 2010 and have been kind of steadily going down over the last several years. The reason for that primarily is some of the regulation changes that we've made, where we've taken some things that were going to the board of zoning appeals and maybe looking at different approval processes. The big one for this had to do with like all of the firework tents and things, those temporary tents you see at the Fourth of July. Several years ago, we put in some changes to allow administrative approval of those if, if it's the same owner, same location, we haven't had any complaints, those kind of things. We took that out of the realm of the, of the BZA, just to kind of lighten their load a little bit. So that's one of the reasons why that load has been going down the way it has. So that, just wanted to kind of give you an overview of the activity that we've seen over the, the last year in the Planning and Engineering Department. Of course, that doesn't track all the work that's done, like with Mike and his folks, as far as the construction plan review and those kind of things. Obviously, there's, there's a lot more going on. That just kind of gives you a quick overview, so I just wanted to send that your way for your reference and information.
Doug, those, I think the chart that was a couple of slides before this, it dealt with recorded plats.
This one right here?
How does that compare to lot, like lots that have been approved? What's, what's the kind of the comparison there, the lots recorded versus?
Lots approved? Um, you know, that's a good question. I'd have to do a little more looking into that. Off the top of my head, I couldn't tell you, but I can, I can certainly find that information for you.
But lots approved are doubled or tripled, what that might be?
It could be. A lot of it depends on if we're looking at preliminary plans, or if we're looking at, because you don't want to double count something. So if you're counting a preliminary plan and then recounting it again at the final plat stages, if we see something, we don't want to double count the lot. But I can take a look into that. I'd be interested to, to know that as well. So, yeah, we can, we can do that.
Thank you.
Very good report. You know, when other people on Sunday afternoon are watching football, I printed it all off. Guys, I suggest, you haven't gone through this, go through it and just look at it and look at these developments and what has actually been used, what hadn't been used, and good work. I really appreciated this information for what we need to do. We've discussed a lot of things here today, and as I was sitting here and we were talking about those sinkholes, it had to come back to me. As a young boy, we have a sinkhole on the back of our farm, it could be the eighth wonder of the world. But we lost a heifer one afternoon, I couldn't find her. And we found her, but she was on a ledge down in that sinkhole. And the community come in and built wooden block and tackle and, and ropes and lanterns and all this. It was, it was something to behold. It was like Little House on the Prairie, trying to save that heifer. But everybody come in and, you know, that was back when young boys were used to go in the small spots when they needed help. And they, you would go down there and to see that sinkhole down in there, when I saw all of what you had right there, it just brought back memories of that. We got that, got that cow out and saved it, but it was due to the fact of everybody in that community, and I guess that's why out in that area, everybody respects those places, because they are, like I said, the eighth wonder of the world. It's something that people who have never seen these don't understand. And they are rivers that are running down there, so appreciate everybody's involvement today. And any more business?
Just one more quick announcement. We've talked a couple of times, made mention of the comprehensive plan process. The Steering Committee is having their first meeting tomorrow. It's at 2:30 over in the HR Training Room, which is on the second floor of the old Health Department. So I just wanted to make that announcement. We're starting to move forward with that, so, thank you. Mike, did you?
And, yes, I had one more thing. You will be seeing an update to our flood ordinance. We're getting some new flood maps from FEMA, and we need to update our flood ordinance to reflect those new maps.
Yes, we, yeah, we've, we're looking at that internally. We plan to bring that for the day meeting in February, for a public hearing in March, and then County Commission approval in April. We have to have it approved by May, so that gives us some time, so we're, we're in good shape. One other item, she's going to kill me for doing this, but she stayed through the whole meeting. I think most of you may have met her, but our new planner, Karen Gardner, she's sitting in the, in the back. She can wave there. Yeah, there she is. So we're very happy to have her on board.